Finding board meeting to order at six thirty three P M. Pursuant to the governor's makers March fall two thousand and twenty orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. That's general law, chapter thirty eight, section eighteen. And the governor's March fifteenth two thousand and twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting in Middleborough planning board is conducted via Zoom. Remote participation to the greatest extent possible. All right, if everybody would like to join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all. Um, okay, do we have any? We have no continued hearings, no announcements. Chuck Leanne?
What?
Okay, I'm still trying to get on with my iPad so you can see me, but I'm having a little difficulty catching up. So, um, a little luck, it will be on in a few minutes. Um, all right, under unanticipated, do we have any members of the court have any unanticipated?
Yeah, I have a question. Are we in the review period for forty hour right now, sixty or ninety day review period?
Yes, I'll let Leanne, Leanne, go ahead and answer that.
Uh, what, I'm not sure what you mean by the sixty or ninety days.
There was a document that was put out after the document was submitted submitted to, um, the state. There's a review, I think the next step is a review period by the other boards and things like that. And and I wanted to know, are we in the review period?
The review period is not for other boards, the review period is what the state, the timeframe that the state had to review our forty hour application.
Okay, so when when do the other boards or other other town departments consider this?
We are going to have, um, community outreach, which will involve, um, every board in town for, um, so everybody will be included in that.
Will that also include like the fire department, the middleboro gas and electric, the sewer department and the school department?
Everybody will be notified, yes.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions from anyone in the audience or board members?
I want to know, I want to know what Alex is eating, I want some.
No, it it looks like it's, uh, I thought he had a bib on for a minute there, but it's just his jacket with his T shirt, so.
I should use it then.
I saw him about an hour ago, uh, running on Plymouth Street, isn't it?
Yep, quick run and then soccer practice and now here.
How you doing, man?
Got to make Hey, Well, the Sunshines.
Yeah, you go. All right.
Okay, um, we have payment of bills, we have a bill from Standard Enterprises. Uh, bill number six oh four nine dated five six two thousand and twenty one in the amount of hundred and fifty two dollars, there was a letterhead, great promotion.
I move approval for, uh, of the payment.
Second. Second by Mr. Farley, first by Mr. Healy. Roll call vote, Mr. Gasso.
Aye.
Mr. Healy.
Aye.
Ms. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Farley.
Aye.
And chair of the party passes. Uh, we have a full minute, May fourth, two thousand and twenty one. Um, does anybody have any changes to those minutes?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. McGee.
I have this one on page six. Um, the second, um, item, it's just the first sentence, it says coming out of chapter. I think we did just add whatever chapter it's coming out of, whether it's sixty one, sixty one A or sixty one B.
Okay.
Okay, don't think that's a problem. I do have a question, um, on page D. Um, it says planning board discussed legal representation on the Lethal Heart for redevelopment. I thought we did ask, um, a town planner if she would check with, or make sure, or, you know, make sure that we can have representation from them. Seeing that they, um, probably do most of the, most of the towns in the Commonwealth, so do you have any thought about that, Leanne?
I don't have an update on that, I can, I'll ask problems this week.
Okay, so should we change that? It it says planning board discussed legal representation, but I know that we specifically asked that you check with K P. And see if they could do dual representation, so if we could change that in the minutes just so we have it correct. So with those two changes, do I hear a motion?
Move approval.
Back to Healy, second by Mr. Farley. Uh, roll call vote, Mr. Gasso.
Aye.
Mr. Healy.
Aye.
Ms. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Farley.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Uh, we are six thirty nine, so we have no form A's. Um, so we're going on to other, chapter sixty one A, one twenty Thomas Street. Now sixty lot forty eight fifty one, seventy acres right of first refusal. Do we have any comment from any board members on that?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Ms. McGee.
I, I was just wondering if the planning would staff, no. Um, are there any, um, surrounding land that's like being held in a conservation trust or, um, wetlands surrounding it, et cetera?
Um, there is conservation land, uh, in town on land that does about it.
Right, that's right. There was a water field there once.
Um, it's always a nice thing when you can bundle, um, land together like that.
Think the, uh, the term that they use is contiguous, contiguous process. And that's, that's making more value.
And it also, it also helps make a wildlife corridor when you have, um, those large tracts of land together, um, it's, it's a very good thing. And price is, um, not bad.
Right, from the chair, um, I've talked a little bit to the conservation agent, it's a little too late. We had already voted to, uh, send this one through. Looking at it has about nineteen hundred feet of street front. Um, so that could be a question and the selectmen are able to, um, assign this to a nonprofit. And I'd like to look up the sixty one A law and the sixty one A law says that we may find that any nonprofit or the selectman may assign that to any nonprofit. That they would be willing to do that with. Um, with that in mind, they can probably get, I would think somewhere between twenty and thirty lots out there. Um, if a nonprofit was willing to buy it, maybe knock off the front lots and sell them. Um, probably get their money back and end up with fifty acres. Um, the sixty one A says that you, you have to retain seventy acres in record or or some type of open space. So I, I believe that this one, although it, if we could keep fifty acres of it. It's a butt's piece of town land that is six acres and that six acres are butts of town land that's ten acres. Also, on the other betting side, there's a, what we used to do is two lot subdivision that has forty acres. Which I believe the people would like to keep preserved, I don't think they have any intention of ever breaking it up. So, you know, there could be, you know, seventy acres, uh, seventy acres that could be preserved. Um, plus fifty acres that are butts that it seems like it might not be developed certainly in the near future. And hopefully maybe not for a long, long time. So I guess my opinion of this one is I think that we should send the selectmen something saying that we should try to do what we can. Um, you know, I agree it, it isn't like the usual, usually we get a bunch of backland, we can't do anything with it. But this one appears that there's a bunch of street footlots. I guess as planners, I think that if we could do eight lots instead of twenty five to thirty lots, I think that would be a good thing. That the planning board, um, does, so I guess I would, after that, I entertain a motion. Mr. Farley, you making a motion that we, uh, send a letter to selectmen saying that we would hope that they would do everything in their powers to. And we would work with the selectmen, um, to preserve the, um, land at one twenty Thomas Street that's under sixty one A. And exercise the right of first refusal.
Yes, I am.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Healy. Roll call vote, Mr. Gasso.
Aye.
Mr. Healy.
Aye.
Ms. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Farley.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, we're.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Healy.
Could I ask that, uh, uh, you put, um, the narrative that you shared with us prior to our vote? Uh, in whatever message goes to the selectmen?
Absolutely, I will work with, uh, our town planner to do that.
Thank you.
I'll get that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, we're six forty four, just six forty five, I have to wait a few more minutes, we still got a few things on our agenda. Um, so I'd like to wait a few more minutes, hopefully get a couple more zoning board members in. Um, so next is discussion of resume the meetings in person discussion. Um, does anyone have any opinions on this, on the board, I'm sure. Uh, well, let me take, let me take the town planner first. Um, Ms. Bradley, what is your thought about?
Well, we received an email from, um, the town manager today, which I, um, I forwarded to everybody. That meetings can resume, um, you know, soon. And, uh, for the selectmen starting their meetings in person, no hybrid on the twenty four.
Thank you. Um, any board members that like to speak on this subject?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. McGee.
Um, we, yeah, um, we can resume on May twenty ninth, um, the state of emergency is in effect until June fifteenth. Which allows boards, committees and commissions to continue meeting, um, if they want remotely. Um, we don't have to to meet in person yet if we don't want to personally. I, I don't care either way, um, but just because, you know, we can, if the board feels they want to wait till the state of emergency is lifted. We do have that ability, um, they're also working with the state to come up with a plan to allow boards, committees and commissioners to continue meeting remotely. If they so choose, um, so that's in the works right now. Again, it doesn't matter to me if we meet remote, we meet in person, I'm fine either way, I just wanted to get that information out there.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board like to speak on this subject?
Yeah, I, I agree with Tracy, there are going to be times, um, perhaps because of exposure or, or just, uh, because, uh, uh, people are feeling as if they, uh, would rather stay home on a given evening. That, um, it would be helpful to have that as an alternative for some time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Healy.
Thank you.
Any other members? Uh, the chair would like to say I'd like to get back meeting in person as soon as we can. Um, I understand the reluctance and the top of the issue, sit in the chair and, uh, rather than at the town hall, get to the town hall at a certain time and have the meeting. But we're gonna have to start it, whether we start it next meeting or within a couple of meetings. I believe it's inevitable it's gonna happen, um, so I guess my opinion is I'd like to get that going sooner than later. Leanne, when is our next meeting?
June first.
Okay, um, so I guess my opinion would be that I will be going into town hall June first, uh, for that meeting. And I think the rest of the board should try to get in for that meeting, um, if they can. So we can at least get back to being used to it. Um, it'd be nice to have a meeting together, um, and then, you know, if someone doesn't need to come, at least we would know better how it's gonna work. So, um, it'll be interesting to see if there's three or four of us in town hall, how the remote is gonna work. So, um, that would be my only opinion, but it'd be nice to have one, one full board meeting. Um, you're gonna come up to that in the next thing that I, I bring up on the agenda, so. Um, but it certainly isn't mandatory at this point, but I'd like to see that happen. Um, it is now six forty nine. Um, we have one, two, three, four, four zoning board members here. Um, so we have two other things, uh, so actually one other thing before that. So we might as well just do it, no, let's, let's do that one. Um, so I have sent a, um, a work meeting, um, criteria to the members. Uh, the members all want to have work meetings, I guess. I hope you have it in front of you, that it was in your packet. Um, so I'll quickly go over the list and one by one, if anyone has a problem with them, shout out. Uh, I mean, I will recognize you and you'll be able to talk. So number one, uh, I'd like the meetings to be held in person, it's gonna be kinda hard to, uh, talk about these things. They're not gonna be long, it's gonna be an hour, um, so the meetings will be held in person. We won't stop, um, until June twenty second, so it's, it's after the fifteenth, um, but I'd like them to be held in person. Um, it's gonna be hard to have three or four of us in a meeting room and hopefully we'll have one or two people that'll be there. Discussing the subject at hand for the night, um, so that it would be nicer in person, so does anybody have a problem with that? Okay, hearing done, number two, meetings will be held once every other month, beginning seven o'clock on June twenty second, August tenth and October twelfth. Does anybody know if they have any problems with those dates?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. McGee.
Not, not such the dates, the time, can we start them at six thirty?
Uh, if the board would like to, we can certainly start at six thirty. Uh, is there anyone on the board that has a problem with that? Mr. Farley.
Um, I was actually, I was very pleased to see that you had it starting at seven, wow. As Mr. Healy noted, I was, uh, scoffing down my dinner at six thirty and, uh, six thirty is, is doable, but it's very, very tight. I'll be, um, more than likely I'll be rushing in at six thirty five in some form of dishevelment.
Okay, I'm, I'm at seven, that's fine.
Okay, and and just a note from the chair is that since I've been on the planning board, we always start it at seven. When the agenda gets full, that's why we bumped it up to six thirty. Um, generally from six thirty to seven, we do a lot of upkeep and bookkeeping stuff, so form A's, which are pretty well just, um, you know, we're signing them. So, but yeah, seven o'clock, I, I just assumed you seven o'clock gives me a little more time to get ready also. So let's keep it at seven. Number three, if we do not have full attendance, work meetings will be discontinued. I guess one of the things with work meetings is if we're gonna have work meetings, we really need to have everybody there to talk about it. And I mean, one of the problems is that if you don't have somebody there that's trying to play catch up, it doesn't really work. So I hate to have work meetings without a full board there so that we can, um, all discuss the same subject. Anybody have a problem with that? Okay, um.
Are you addressing both, uh, the planning board members and the zoning board members present?
No, 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 the only thing, this is only, I'm only discussing stuff on work meetings. And the first work meeting would be June twenty second, then we'd have one on August tenth and October twelfth. And then we need to decide from there whether we're really making progress with work meetings. Cause it is, um, it's taking that every other night, every other week that we have off, and we're putting a work meeting on it. So my, I want to get back to planning, I've always wanted to do planning. Um, we seem to be, and I hate to say it, the planning police, uh, we're doing stuff after. So I'd like to be proactive in planning rather than reactive. Um, and this is a way, we used to have work meetings when I was on the board before. I think that very, very good if all the members work at it, but if all the members don't work at it, it's only as good as. The working person seems to be the one that always questions something about the work meeting later. And that's something, um, I'd rather certainly not have, so that's why I'm trying to keep it together is everyone be there.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. McGee.
I definitely cannot guarantee attendance, um, my, you know, my board of selectmen, um, they, you know, we do have Tuesday meetings. And I'm looking at October twelfth and October eleventh, a Monday, is our usual meeting date. But, um, we sometimes meet on Tuesday, um, after Monday holiday. So I definitely cannot guarantee that I will be there on October twelfth, we haven't set our meetings yet for October. So, um, if I have a board selectman meeting, unfortunately I need to be there instead of here.
Okay, um, the only thing I ask that I, I, even I usually know what I'm doing the Friday before the Tuesday. Um, so if, if everyone, um, the Tuesday, um, so if, if everyone, um, could, and if you want to, I'll shoot out an email so everyone can reply the email, uh, the Friday before. But, um, you know, I'd like to know the Friday before the Tuesday that we are gonna have full attendance, or hopefully. I mean, there's those occasions when something happens, but, um, I would like to, you know, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, Tracy, and there's gonna be conflicts with everybody, they're going on vacation, we can switch these, but I'd, I'd really like to start on a definitive note, and then if we have to change it, we have to change it. So, that's not a problem.
I, I know in September, you know, I'll know in, even August probably, if we're gonna meet that week, so I'll have plenty of time to give you notice.
Yep, no problem. Um...
Mr. Chairman?
Number five, the only item, Mr. Haley?
Yeah, could you ask the, uh, other members of the zoning board whether they have, uh, any difficulties with those dates and times?
When, Mr. Haley, we're not gonna meet with the zoning board, who's not gonna be on these work meetings. These work meetings are, um, to talk to people like the water department, talk to people from the sewer department, talk about getting infrastructure, talking about what capacity we have, talking about getting industrial people, um, probably as little as we have to about residential stuff, but certainly I'm a big proponent of getting the, the industrial people in so we get a good tax base. So, uh, it, we really have nothing to do with the zoning board. That's all this is, is work meetings.
Yeah. Uh, my, my point, Mr. Chairman, is the next item on the agenda is site plan review bylaw, discussion with the ZBA. Both boards have a responsibility, uh, to participate in that, uh, as well. And if we're, uh, are we going to be setting those at a, on a hot night when we're not, uh, doing our own planning?
Probably not. Um, the hope is that we can talk to them tonight if, like, if we need to, and if we need to set another meeting, we would set it on a regular meeting night, not the work meetings. The work meetings, you know, if we need to, we can, but the hope is that the work meetings are, I think you've been a, a big one that's focusing on water, sewer, um, you know, I'm big on gas, 'cause it's hard to heat a big building without gas. Um, you know, those type of things that will bring our industrial base up, so it'll bring the taxes hopefully down or not up any higher. So, I think that's what these work meetings would be my opinion, and more for is to, um, get the industrial tax base up. Um, but at, at this point, it would not concern the zoning board. Uh, hopefully we can talk about that with the zoning board tonight, see where we're going, and if, if we need to go to their meeting, or they need to come to another one of ours, that's what my hope is, that we could do it at a regular meeting, not one of our work meetings.
Chairman, I, can I ask, Chairman? Can I ask?
Yes, sir.
During your work meeting, will minutes, will minutes be recorded?
Uh, yes. Um, I believe that the idea would be that they are, we, we probably, at this point, won't be having attendance of the public. Um, I mean, we probably can't say they can't come, but certainly we're trying to get this so we can plan the future of the town for industrial tax base. But there will be minutes, um, that are gonna have to be recorded anyway. Uh, whether we have those written minutes and put in the record, we probably will, uh, but very, um, slim minutes. I don't need, um, if somebody wants to see them, they can watch the recording.
Well, how soon, how quickly after the work meetings will you approve them?
Um, I would say it might take, I'd like to think it's gonna be two weeks, but it may be our second meeting, which probably is 30 days.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Um, all right, so number five is the only items to discuss are those on the agenda, and only one item to be discussed per work session. Um, I think that behooves us because we don't wanna keep getting off on tangents. Um, if the board would like to discuss what we would discuss, um, I'd like to do water first. Uh, we can get some information from the water department. Um, hopefully, you know, maybe the superintendent can come in and actually talk with us. Um, but I'd like to have, um, really the minutes, I mean, the, the calculations, the wells, how much, where the water service is. Um, hopefully you will have a lengthy packet that tells you everything you'd ever wanna know about water, including the main that goes down 105 that may or may not be there at this point. Um, so...
It's there, but...
No, that's what I'm saying. But I, I think...
It's there, it's just a call in.
Right, but, you know, the, the work meetings are just that. There's something to, um, you know, when we have questions about water, just get all your questions together for that night. If we have a sewer night, get all your questions together for the sewer service area. My hope is that we're gonna have plans, we will have the water or sewer superintendent. Um, hopefully they might be able to be in attendance, but certainly I hope to have a good hit list for you, um, for that. So going on to number six, members of planning board must be willing to follow through with conducting research, making phone calls, sending emails, and drafting documents. The idea of work meetings is we question at the meeting, but we work afterwards. Um, so the hope is that it will become very productive. Um, if it becomes productive, I would love to keep them going. If it doesn't become productive, I'm not interested in wasting another night doing it. Um, so we've gotta keep on track. Um, okay.
Chairman, I have a, I have a question. Um, you mentioned public, these are work, these are work meetings. Um, it sounds like you're very organized on, um, your order, what the topics would be. Where is, will there be a list of those topics that other board members will be aware of? And are other board members able to listen in on your work meetings?
Yes. Um, to answer the two questions, yes, it's gonna have to be, because it's gonna be a forum of the board, it's gonna have to be posted, and posted 48 hours ahead of time. Um, and it, there has to be some type of agenda there, um, and there would be a packet. And I believe if you want, if you're interested in the subject and you want a packet, um, we can probably get a packet to, uh, the, the zoning board, um, so that the secretary could email it to you. Um, I would hope that at some point we could open it up, but I really need to get organized first. We have to make sure that the members, um, are working at it and it's productive. I think that, that if you take six or seven people, which there'll be, just with the board members and the town planner and the assistants, um, you know, it gets a little, for an hour, it gets a little tough, um, and I don't wanna, um, slow the fluid of it down yet, so, but yes, absolutely. Um, and if you have any questions about any of it, I'd be happy to have you send emails to our planning department, and we would try to ask those questions of any of the topics of people that come in on those topics. So, it's, it's something, um, you know, I, I mean, certainly I favor the other boards, um, asking questions, I, I'm in favor of the general public asking questions, but at this point, we've got to limit it to see how well these are gonna go, and how much part, how many questions the planning board has. Um, if we can get through it, yep.
Uh, Chairman, visibility to it's the first step, if it's posted like you described, and the topics are in order, um, it's obvious that myself and other members had questions to present them in an orderly fashion, so, um, so long as it's visible, I just think that makes sense.
Yep. Um, absolutely. I mean, that's what, the hope is that, um, we're trying to get the, the water department, certainly I believe is trying to get their service area enlarged, um, but they're constrained by how much water they have, and they're working every day at that. They're putting up a new tower now, uh, behind the new DPW. Uh, the sewer department went through a $25 million upgrade a few years ago, um, but not many people know about that. So that's what I'm trying to do, is get those things so certainly our board knows, and then maybe we can do some outreach so that people know that we are working toward a plan. Um, you know, my opinion is residential dwellings just cost us more money, um, industrial and, and, you know, commercial make us tax money. So that's what I'm looking to do, is, is get to those taxpaying people that don't cost us any money. So, all right. Does anyone in the board have any other questions? Does anybody in the public have any other questions? So I guess we, we will set the first one for June 22nd. Um, you will have a packet, same thing as we usually do on Friday, we pick up our packet for our Tuesday meeting, um, but it'll be on one subject, and with a little luck, we'll get, uh, most of your questions answered with a presentation rather than asking a bunch of questions. And then we can ask questions afterwards. So, that's the plan. Anyone have any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Bradley?
So are you, are you looking for Mike Bumpus to attend the first meeting and give a presentation?
Well, I, I'm looking for Mike Bumpus certainly to give us as much information as he can. I'm not, uh, requiring him if he's able to come and willing to come, um, but I'd like to keep on topic. Um, I don't really wanna talk to him about maintenance and, and what they're doing. I'd like to talk to him about, uh, extension of lines, making sure that we have excess water that someone could hook up to, and any concerns that he has that we should know as planners. So, um, as, as we, in, it's gonna take a fair amount of work on my part and the town planner's part, um, to get it together, but I don't think we need him in attendance. I'd like to have him in attendance if we could. So, but, well, I, I'm gonna push him for a lot of information so that we can have information, um, before that meeting. I don't really...
Okay, so you're, so you'll get in touch with him?
Yeah, I will have a meeting with him sometime this week and, and go with that rhythm. And then I'll keep you on deck, it might even be with you in attendance.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. All right. We're at number four, which is site plan review bylaw, discussion with the ZBA. Um, do we have the chairman of the ZBA here?
You do.
Yes?
I am here.
Okay, Mr. Main, do you?
Oh, that's Darren speaking. Darren, wait.
Okay.
I'm over here, way in the back, see?
For some, for some reason I don't keep Darren on my screen.
No, he's in, he's in the...
I'm in the meeting hall. I'm in the...
Okay.
He's on the phone.
He's hiding over in the corner.
Yes, well, not on the phone.
He should have a dress on, 'cause that's what Sandy usually says.
Wow.
There were several things wrong with that.
Wow. This is, this is a public meeting, right? Okay, never mind.
Darren, in Darren's defense, Joe stole his seat.
I did.
Um, okay, so Darren, would you like to open up? Darren, would you like to open up your meeting?
Uh, I, I guess we could. It doesn't really, it's a joint meeting and it's your meeting, so, uh, we're in attendance here.
I think, I think procedurally you would have to open our meeting, uh, Darren, wouldn't you?
Uh, okay.
Yes, I believe, I believe you'll start from there and take roll call.
All right. Um, being the appropriate time of 7:09 on 5/18/21, I will declare this meeting of the Middleborough Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, to order. Um, roll call for attendance. Uh, Jack Haley?
Uh, present.
Mike Salamini?
Present.
Um, myself, and Joe.
Present.
Who's a dual. Actually, Jack is two, okay.
All right, we have, I believe we have Mr. Braun.
Huh? Oh, Ed Medeiris, excuse me, I'm sorry. Ed Medeiris is also, um, Ed Medeiris, Dr. Braun, excuse me, is in the audience as well. Little tough without the computer in front of me.
So, um, just to start the meeting, does everyone at the zoning board have the draft Middleborough Site Plan Review bylaw?
Yes.
Yeah, I copied the email that, that was, that was sent out, yes.
Okay. Um, so I, I'd like to take my board first. Um, does anyone have any questions, um, of the Site Plan Review bylaw? Okay. Um, the chair will ask a few questions. The purple text is recommended additions, uh, to the town planner, Ms. Bradley. Um, whose recommended additions are those?
Whose recommendations are those? That was, uh, that was information that Serp had put in, and then I reviewed it and agreed that it's a recommended, it should be a recommended, um, addition.
Okay. And the red ones, uh, metrics that maybe need to be changed, and whose, whose questions are...
That was between, uh, both Serp and myself.
Okay.
And, um, the, the number one thing that might need to be changed, um, is they ju- they just put in ZBA, can be ZBA or Planning Board, for the special permit, well, not special permit, but for the site plan, um, granting authority, review authority. Uh, and Joe and I did a little bit of research today, and we looked at all surrounding communities and, you know, surrounding communities that do have site plan review, um, everyone is the planning board, it's not ZBA for site plan review. Um, we looked at Matafoits that we're in, Plymouth, Halifax, Lakeville, Bridgewater, Rehnam, Carter, Rochester, and Plumton, and Plumton. Um, but we couldn't find any town that has ZBA as, um, doing the site plan review. It's always the planning board, but I just wanted to have a discussion, um, with the ZBA.
Okay, and I'd also like to note that the ZBA at this point does what I would call Site Plan Review, but it's under the thought of special permit for any building over 20,000 square feet. So, I'd like to, having no questions, I have a bunch of questions, but the biggest one is on the first page. Uh, to the chairman of the ZBA, if you would open it up and, uh, give me your thoughts and the members' thoughts of doing site plan review rather than the planning board. Um, I guess I have nothing in it, it could be either one.
Well, first off, we weren't aware of this application until recently, so we really haven't had a lot of time to look, uh, through the application. Um, I don't necessarily have a problem doing site plan review. We normally do site plan review for anything over 20,000 square feet. We also do site plan review for all 40Bs in town. Um, so we're familiar with that type of a process. Um, everything gets reviewed by the engineer, as I'm sure the planning board does the same. Um, so I'm not sure, I guess the only reason we're here is because you originally wanted this to be the zoning board of appeals, and then you wanna change it to the, uh, planning board?
No, I, I think it, I think that should stay with the jurisdiction of the, of the planning board. I mean, the, the ZBA is basically a board that is, has been put in place for, um, variances, 40Bs, some special permits, um, but that's it, but not necessarily site plan review. I couldn't find any site, any ZBAs that do site plan review.
Out of the 351 towns in Massachusetts, we're the only...
Well, I don't have time to look at 351, but I did look at about 30.
I'm sure we're not the only ones.
Well, if you wanna take a look, you know, right ahead, but...
We're, we're good, Brian.
Could we, could we have the questions... Could we, could we have the questions run through the chair? I don't, well, free for all hands.
Okay. My opinion would be that I don't necessarily believe it needs to be the planning board because everybody else doesn't. We, the planning board has a fair amount on the-
There's a lot in our, there's a lot that needs to be amended, revised.
Mr. Chairman? But-
Mr. Healy.
Mr. Healy.
Yeah. First of all, if Leanne would repeat her last comment, but before that, before you do that, Leanne, I think the Mass Municipal Association, one call to them or letter to them might get you a statewide picture of who does site plan reviews in each of the communities.
Well, I don't, it's, I don't know if they would be able to tell me that. I am on a map planner's listserv and I did post that question several months ago. And of the responses that I got, I did not get any that have ZBA as site plan review. However, there are some that have ZBA as special permit granting authority, but this is not a special permit. This is for buildings from 1,000 square feet up to the 19,999 square feet that we would be doing the site plan review. For 20,000 square feet and above, that would be a special permit from the ZBA.
So, so you said 1,000 square feet up to 20,000, the planning board now wants to do?
Correct, for site plan review. It's not a special permit.
So, now let's say somebody has a detached auxiliary apartment that normally fall under the ZBA.
This is commercial. This is not residential. Except for, except for multifamily dwellings.
Right. It, it would be three or more dwelling units.
Yes.
And, and I guess, I would say that, again, I don't, I, I will take it for what it's worth, for what other towns are doing, but I'm not necessarily gonna agree that just because everybody else is doing it through the planning board that it's the planning board's job.
I mean, I understand that, but typically, ZBAs don't even do special permits for commercial buildings that are 20,000 square feet and over. Whatever threshold your town has. Usually, ZBAs do not do site plan review or special permits for commercial buildings. It's, every town that I've worked in, most towns that I know of, it's always the planning board. Our town does it a little bit different. We do have the ZBA doing the 20,000 square feet and above for special permits.
So, who's this change coming from? Is it coming from a town planner or a Serp?
Excuse me?
Who's this driving change coming from? The town planner or the monies from Serp?
No, the driving force in this, the driving force in this is the, is the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board. This has been discussed between both boards probably since I started three years ago.
Has it ever been discussed with the Zoning Board of Appeals before, until now?
I'm sorry, there was a motorcycle going by, I didn't hear you.
I'm just curious, is, so this is the first time it's been discussed with the Zoning Board and even though it's been discussed with the Selectmen and the Planning Board for two, two or more years?
For site plan review?
Yes.
I, it, I mean, it, this is the first time that we've, we've had, this is a new bylaw. This is a draft. We haven't, we have not discussed a draft with the Board of Selectmen. We have discussed with the Board of Selectmen that the town needs to have site plan review.
Which is-
Mr. Chair? That's a public meeting. Anybody could, it's on their, it was on their agenda. I mean, it's a public meeting. Anybody can watch and participate.
Okay. Hang on. Ms. McGee, get her up.
Could I just ask the members of the ZBA, if they're not on camera, if they can identify themselves before speaking, because I have no idea who's talking?
Um, if, if you look, and I hate to say his last name because I'm gonna probably butcher it, Michael Salimini, when he turns green around it, he's the one talking.
Yeah, I'm right here. My, my little screen lights up when I talk. I'm here.
Okay. I, I didn't know that. I, I've been looking at all the people going, he's talking.
The only one that becomes a challenge is the one that shows Leanne Bradley twice because that's the town selectmen's meeting as well. And Ed's got three, he's got three up there.
That's, that's because I'm deaf. I have to call in through my phone. I'm watching on the computer and you can see me on the iPad. So, I am a little different. I have a, I'm a little challenged. So, okay, so-
Mr. Chair.
Is there any other comments from the zoning board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Braun.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any great projection to either, either group doing the task. My only concern is, just like you were talking about tonight, there's a great deal of work, relatively speaking, on the planning board and far less work on the Zoning Board of Appeals. And it just might be a thought that if you spread the work out a little bit, bit better, we might get better outcomes.
Thank you, Mr. Braun.
Meaning leave it-
Mr. Healy.
Does that mean that your thought would be to leave the job to the zoning board?
I, I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other. All I'm saying is that in the town of Middleborough, my observation is that the planning board works far, far more hours than the zoning board does. And it just seems reasonable from a work distribution standpoint that if we split up the work a little bit better, we might get better outcomes for both boards.
Well, Mr. Chair, I understand that, but the role of the ZBA is to, is for the, for somebody who is seeking relief from the zoning bylaw. This is not seeking relief from anything. It's not a special permit. It's not a variance.
I, I understand exactly what you're saying.
I, I don't even, well, I, I don't, if it comes to, I don't think it comes to that general law, so I-
My argument isn't that the zoning board is more qualified or less qualified. All I'm suggesting is that certain boards are far more overworked than other boards.
No, I-
It just seems reasonable.
I understand that, but I just, I understand that. It's just that site plan review does not fall under the jurisdiction of what the ZBA is meant to do. Nobody is seeking relief from the zoning bylaw and that is the role and the jurisdiction of the ZBA.
I don't think you even have a clue what I said.
I did. I heard everything you said about workload. I totally-
It has nothing to do with that, what you just said. All I'm suggesting, either now or in the future, is that if we split the work up a little bit better, we'll get better outcomes. That's all I'm suggesting.
But it still has to be, it still has to be per mass general law. The, the ZBA can't approve wetland lines or, because it doesn't fall under their jurisdiction, site plan review doesn't necessarily fall under the ZBA's jurisdiction because somebody is not seeking relief from the zoning bylaw.
Mr. Chair.
I understand what you're saying, but you're talking tonight, right, about where we should place exactly the authority to approve this. If we have no, then why even ask us to come here?
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna take the meeting back for a minute. So, I guess my opinion would be, and I probably like a motion to this effect, and then we can go on, because it was one of the initial questions, should the site plan approval authority be changed from the ZBA to the planning board? I'd like to go to Serp first, and I'm not sure that we shouldn't go to legal counsel to find out if site plan approval can be done by either the ZBA or planning board. I mean, if it can't be done by the ZBA-
Eddie, with all due respect, with all due respect, the, the Zoning Board of Appeals does do site plan review on several different projects in town. Any project over 20,000 square feet gets a site plan review from this committee. Also, we do all site plan review for 40Bs in town, and I realize those are residential. But as, as long as we are the special permit granting authority, it doesn't matter who does it.
I, I mentioned those.
Hang on, Mike.
I mentioned all those.
Go ahead, Lee.
Chairman, I can understand our town planner's view on relief. I can specifically think of a situation that might be going on right now where a mixed-use property has unused commercial space and that is going, they're trying to convert it to residential space. That would go before the zoning board in our case. That is relief. I would think our zoning board would still have that. And that comes up in October when we vote on 40R. A mixed-use property that doesn't get occupied, the commercial space should go empty, could become a review for the zoning board. And I think it should stay with the zoning board, not the planning board, because it's such a possible, and it's right in the new document, the draft that was just presented. And it's in purple, change of use of municipal, institutional, commercial, industrial, multifamily. It's right in the business section that says that. And that should stay before us, is my opinion.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Ms. McGee.
Um, I, I agree with Leanne. I mean, I, I deal with a lot of towns and I've never dealt with a town that has a zoning board for site plan review. And I'm very familiar with what the ZBA does. And site plan review is just not what they're meant to do. They're meant to, like Leanne said, you know, for people to seek relief from variances and ask, you know, for special permits, but-
Explain to me what the difference would be in a site plan review from the planning board versus the zoning board?
Well, the, this is part of what the planning board does routinely on-
You're gonna send it to an engineer like we are.
On most of their projects. It's not something that we don't routinely do. I mean, we deal with drainage. We deal with all the issues that come up on site plan review. And like I said, I've never heard of a town that's had a, a zoning board do site plan review. And I, it's always the planning board. And I just, I feel that it's a natural fit for it to be with the planning board. And like I, if, like Leanne pointed out, it's just kinda, it's like you've been doing it all along because that's what's been done. But there are instances when things have been done for a long time because nobody read the law or, or, you know, did a call to town council and said, hey, are we, are we supposed to be doing this? And, you know, I mean, it happened with me at my job. We were supposed to be issuing a permit that another board was issuing. And we didn't know we were supposed to be issuing that permit until that other board chirped up and said, hey, you guys are supposed to be doing this. And we were like, oh, okay, looked at the law. Sure enough, the law says that we were supposed to be doing it. So, we took it back from them. Without another board calling it to our attention, we would not have realized that legally, under MGL, we were supposed to be issuing this permit.
I'm not sure how that's relevant to the conversation.
And I'm not even sure what staffing the Zoning Board of Appeals has in your office. But, you know, having the planner and, and the assistant and the clerk, I think it would be a benefit to have more in-depth review done of the site plans before it even gets to the planning board. So, I, I just think that we do have the staffing to handle it. I don't feel that the planning board is so busy that we wouldn't be able to handle it. And, and I just think that that's a natural fit.
Well, thank you, Ms. McGee. Mr. DeGrasse, do you want to talk to that?
Well, I mean, ultimately, we're looking at a new bylaw for the town. So, whoever's given the special permit and granting authority will be that authority. Now, it's obvious the planning board would like to have this based on the discussions, at least by the town planner and some of your members. I don't, I don't, I don't know that the zoning board has a dog in the fight in that sense, other than it was written up that way and that's why we were invited in, I, I assume.
It just makes, this just makes me question why we're looking for this change.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think I'm talking to both channels.
Go ahead.
Mr. Manville?
So, to, to Tracy's suggestion about staff, being one of that staff, I do see a little bit of the inside baseball that goes on when the planning department and planning board are working on a development. Not only do we regularly work with the, with the department's internal structure that is geared towards this type of project, but also we're working with the engineers on a regular basis. I go out to the site and I usually lay eyes on what's going on up there. We write up reports. And our engineers give us multiple reports that get fed back to the planning board. It's a little bit different interaction than what I've seen with the zoning board, only because the planning board is geared toward this and it's what they do. And it just, it's, it just seems to be more of a better fit. It's not that one board is doing, doing it the wrong way or doing less. It's just that it's what the planning department and planning board do on a regular basis. The infrastructure's in place. And we may go into a little more depth because we're really covering things that we know have to be covered. And we're just making sure that all the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed. And because we do so much of that on the retail developments that go on, that spills over into the commercial so that when we're looking at anything there, we're following up on all the same things. So, just my two cents on that.
Chairman, Chairman, I look at this as, Chairman, I look at this as you're, you're creating the rules and now you're checking your own paper. There's no checks and balances in this.
Thank you.
So, ZBA gives checks and balances.
I would, I would say two things. I think that we should check with either town council, we should check with Serp first. And I think Serp is gonna say it could be either one. So, I'd like to check with some legal counsel, whether it's town council or KMP, and find out if the ZBA can do it. I'd like to know whether site, if this is, to everyone here, this is a brand-new bylaw, site plan review bylaw. Hasn't been decided who does it, how they do it, even, you know, if, if you go into, and I'm looking at page six of six, and I have a fair amount of questions about different things in it. You know, number one is if you go to page two, the following types of activities and uses require a site plan review by site plan approval authority. Construction, reconstruction, exterior alteration or expansion with a growth area of greater than 1,000 square feet. A two-story colonial, the first floor is generally 1,000 square feet. So, I don't know that we want to start at 1,000 square feet. I mean, a guy can't build a first floor of a one-story colonial. I built some raised ranches. The raised ranches are actually 1,200 square feet. So, I, I think that that's certainly getting small. The question is change of use within a municipal building or multifamily residential building with three or more dwelling units. You know, I, I think there's a lot of questions in here, but I think we need to get by first whether it is gonna be the zoning board or planning board. And I, I believe that's why the zoning board was invited in here tonight, that we don't want to be fighting or debating about this. So, I think we really should find out the legal aspects of it first. And then we're, we're still gonna have to have public areas to go to selectmen before this would get adopted at town meeting. So, this is kind of the first step. And I think inviting the zoning board was so that we understand your feelings, whether you are interested in doing it or not doing it. In my, my count, it appears that there's at least two or three of us that would like to keep it, maybe more. like to keep it, um, maybe more. Um, so I guess I'd like to, from our town planner, it appears that she has an opinion that it is not legal to do it. One thing I can say is I would certainly not want, the, the problem is, and, and I understand the zoning board does this now, you do, and it's called special permit, it's, you know, you're over 40Bs, um, you're doing the apartments that are accessory dwellings for, you know, so that people can keep their homes. And the problem becomes, when does site plan review become a special permit, and when does it become site plan review? Um, I certainly wouldn't want somebody that's trying to take their, you know, you can take a two-family dwelling, make it a three-family dwelling, um, and put a residential unit in it. I guess at some point, we're gonna collide where the guy has to go to the planning board, the zoning board, um, and I don't see that that's, um, gonna be beneficial to anyone. Um, so I guess my opinion would be, I'm not, I believe the planning board has enough, and I, you know, I keep saying it, I'd like to keep planning, and this is part of planning. I mean, I've gotta say that this is part of planning, so I'm happy to see it in front of us. I'm not sure that the planning board needs to do the site plan review. Um, I understand that most of the board members would like to. I'm still up on whether I really want another thing on my plate to do. I mean, I would like to get the water, sewer, uh, gas department in here and, and really work on, I would really like to work on commercial space. I'd really like to be proactive. I look at a 400,000-square-foot building going, I can throw a rock at it for my house. Um, and we didn't get it, because Lakeville is more proactive on commercial buildings than we are. So I guess my opinion is, we need to get proactive and push our commercial space as much as we can. It appears that they're putting not only the 400,000-square-foot building, but a couple other commercial buildings over there, right on the Middleborough line. We're gonna get all the traffic, we're gonna get all the problems of it, and zero for tax base from it. So, I'm not really happy with, um, developers maybe wanting to, to develop in Lakeville rather than Middleborough, um, without us pushing to get those customers in Middleborough. Um, we do have, you know, we've got Amazons in town, um, you know, we have got some, but I can tell you, and I think Mr. Mandio can reiterate this, is that I've been pushing a certain commercial developer to, to develop space that's been permitted for 30 years now. Uh, I mean, it's like pulling teeth to get him to even draw a plan. He's finally drawn a couple of plans, we've gone over it with him, he's supposed to be coming to the board, but even trying to get him to get a meeting with the board is not easy. Um, so, I can tell you that I would much rather, if I had my choice, I'd rather work on getting the business district and the commercial space people in and let the site plan review go to someone else, but that's just my opinion. So, um, Mr. Hill.
Yes, you're, you are, I understand I'm going to speak with counsel, right?
Yep.
Are you gonna, are you gonna talk to Dan, the ZVA counsel, or KMP?
I'll speak with Dan first.
Ms. Bradley.
With whom?
Dan. I'll speak with Dan first.
Um, well, I would think you might want to start with the zoning board's counsel.
All right.
Dan will be fine, Leanne.
I have to, I'll, I'll have to ask Bob News if I can call KP Law.
Okay. Hang on.
I can answer Dan anytime. I just need to get my okay before.
Okay.
Jack, anytime.
Let me take back the meeting. Mr. Hilli, Mr. Hilli.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't say that I thought it was illegal. I, it's atypical in that towns don't have ZVA do site plan review.
I understand.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Hilli.
Um, neither Dan nor KMP are, are legal counsel for the zoning board.
Jack.
Okay, so.
Ed, excuse me.
I, I'd like to take back for a minute, Mr. DeGrasse, would you be interested, 'cause I guess I think that you'd like an answer also, would you be interested through your board to check with your counsel? We will check with our counsel and see what we come up with. I'd really like to have, even if it's an email, I'm not interested in spending a huge amount of time, but I certainly think they can send an email to us pretty quickly, um, but I would like to see if both boards would, you know, I, I mean, I'd like to know, and then I think if we're gonna make a decision, it shouldn't be the two boards only, I think the selectmen are, are one of the ones that should be in on this. Maybe we should have a tri, tri-party of, uh, meeting with the selectmen, um, and try to decide from that. I think that, uh, they're the ones that run the town. I don't think it should be the zoning board and the planning board debating between each other only, that the selectmen are the ones that are supposed to be, um, running the town, so it would be nice to get their opinion. Mr. DeGrasse, if you'd like to speak to that?
I would. Um, Dan Murray will be fine. John Witten is only used as legal counsel for the zoning board when our applicants are paying for it, as everyone knows here, that the zoning board does not have a budget for legal counsel and that type of stuff. So anytime we use John Witten, it's through applicants who are paying for it, along with the engineers and everything else for their particular project. So I don't have a budget to ask John, so I'm not going to ask him those questions. Dan Murray will be completely fine, as far as I'm concerned, for this question.
Chairman, Chairman, does a motion need to be made by the ZVA to get attention on that?
No, the planning board can make that decision. We, we don't have a budget, so I can't put that up to a vote.
Okay.
Unless you're going to pay for it.
Okay. Um, does somebody that's in the town hall have a comment? You lit up, but we couldn't hear you. We, we don't, just to let you know, we don't hear Mr. DeGrasse and Mr. Garcia, we don't hear very well. We can hear Mr. Mandio, because he's at the, uh, center, but it's harder to hear the other people, so, does anybody want to speak in there? Okay, if not, I guess I will direct, or I will look for a motion from one of my board members, um, to make a motion to check with town council and get his opinion. Um, once we get that opinion, I think that we probably will set another meeting. Um, I think to, we can go through this, so we can all debate it, but I think until we know who's actually gonna be the approving authority, um, that probably that approving authority should have the, um, site plan review meeting on this, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Um, Mr. Hilli.
Since, uh, John Witten, Attorney Witten, uh, for the, the ZVA counsel, uh, when, as the chairman has pointed out, uh, the applicants are paying him, uh, is the one we, we would be relying on for advice, uh, and since we don't have a budget, perhaps, uh, somebody could ask the selectmen or the town manager if they'd be willing to spend a few bucks to get the benefit of an attorney who's been representing the ZVA on these matters in the past.
Mr. Hilli, um, all right, Ms. Bradley, go ahead.
I can, I can contact KP Law, I just need to have the town manager's approval to do so. That's all. I, I can.
Yep.
I'm talking about KP Law.
That's who, that's who the ZVA attorney is. John Witten is at KP Law.
John Witten is, in, in his capacity with the zoning board, is an independent attorney. Yes, he does work, he does, he is on the list of, of 50 attorneys that work with government of age, but.
That's who we're hiring when we-
We have a, we have a unique relationship with him. It's not-
Okay, Mr. Pauli.
I, it's, it's just, as, for the planning board, can we discuss our relationship with counsel? Uh, I don't know if Leanne really needs to talk the block every single time we have a question. It seems like with, there's an extra step in there, and I'm, I'm not sure that that's necessary. Uh, just an item for a future discussion.
No, no, I understand that, Mr. Pauli, um, that was what I discussed earlier in the minutes, and why one of the minutes changed, so that we could, uh, make sure that that question was asked, so Ms. Bradley will work on that before our next meeting. Uh, but my other thought is, just to, you know, for interesting, and I, I'm not necessarily a fan of the South Coast Rail, 'cause I don't think we're getting anything from them. This is the first thing we've got from, which is already dividing a little bit between two boards. But, the summary, if everybody wants to read, the first page of the, uh, says, the summary, "The South Coast Rail Technical Assistance Award will provide the town of Middleborough with the three separate deliverables, a new site plan review bylaw." So I guess my opinion would be, I don't see why we can't ask the South Coast Rail to, to pay Mr. Witten. Um, you know, it seems like South Coast Rail doesn't want to pay anything else. They said they'd pay for new site plan review bylaw. I think that they could pay for a, a outside consultant to, uh, give us some opinion on that. Um, I guess is the zoning board, Ms. Bradley.
Um, they gave a $30,000, it wasn't a grant, but it was $30,000 that went to SERPED for these three deliverables.
Okay, and so is SERPED, it doesn't say that, so, South Coast Rail decides who we're gonna have do our bylaw, I guess.
No, we partnered with SERPED.
Okay.
To do this.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. McGee.
Can I just read something, um, that I found from the Citizens Planning Training Collaborative?
Certainly.
Okay. Definition, "Site plan review establishes criteria for the layout, scale, appearance, safety, and environmental impact of commercial or industrial development in an attempt to fit larger projects into the community. Site plan review usually focuses on parking, traffic, drainage, roadway construction, signage, utilities, screening, lighting, and other aspects of the proposal to arrive at the best possible design for the location. In the usual situation, site plan approval must be obtained before the building or special permit is issued. Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, the zoning act, contains no reference to site plan review. Site plan review is entirely the creature of the cities and towns that use it and the courts that have endorsed it." So, just reading what should be considered with site plan review, this is something that we consider every plan that we look at. I mean, it's almost like the zoning board and the planning board are doing the same job. It's the same work. We're all doing this work as part of our plan review and meeting with the engineers. And so, Mr. Chair, you talked about having two levels. Well, now, they're coming to the planning board to do exactly the same thing that the zoning board is doing. We are talking about all those plans, um, and I'm not sure how the zoning board does site plan review. Um, I'm very ignorant of how the ZVA works in, in Middleborough. Does the ZVA go out on site walks? Do you go out and meet with the engineers on site? Do you work for conservation? Do you work with the town utilities when you do site plan review? Because this is the stuff that we do routinely. Um, so that is my question, is, it's not who's busier or what jurisdiction, it's like, which entity is better set up to do, to do the job and to have it done once, instead of having the planning board do it at our plan review, and then having it done again at the zoning board level? That is double, double work on two different boards. And it does imply that site plan review is not referenced in Chapter 48.
Right, right.
Okay, so, so I'd like to, no, uh, no thought on missing you, Mr. DeGrasse, but I believe Mr. Braun is your senior person on the zoning board?
Probably.
Okay, so I'd like to ask Mr. Braun, um, of all the things that she just named, is that something that you look at at every project?
Not at every proposal, but many proposals. Yeah, we do some of that. Uh, for the most part, we're, we're dealing with permits and variances, but, yeah, we do some of that.
Right, so I guess, you know, and I-
Volume one, I'm questioning if the planning board does more of it. I, I wouldn't question that.
Right, and, and I guess to, to Ms. McGee, um, two or three things. We don't do a lot of site plan review, except in the DOD district. Um, we don't do site plans. The reason we're talking about site plan review tonight is, nobody's doing it. Until it's a 20,000-square-foot building in GU, you can do whatever you want. So I disagree that that's what the planning board is doing now, because nobody is doing it.
I didn't say that we're doing a site plan review. I said, we are looking at that stuff when we're doing plan review, when someone comes to us, say, in the industrial park, okay? Um, if someone comes to us, this is what we do on a routine basis. Um, we have our drainage expert that's on the board, um, you know, so this is what we do, this is what we used to do, this is the language we speak, these are the tasks that we're tasked with when we do look at a commercial building, and things that, for instance, marijuana stuff, I mean, look at what we've been doing with the marijuana companies, just to get them to allow to, to go into a, a unit that's part of a larger building. I mean, um, so just that stuff right there, that's, that's what we do, and we talk about the signs, and we're talking about utilities, that's gonna be our work project, how to get gas to the commercial building versus electric versus oil, propane, I mean, this is just stuff that we do, we look at all the time, um, we do it with our subdivisions, we look at the roadway construction, we look at parking in the commercial, in the, um, industrial parks, we look at the drainage. This is all stuff we do routinely. Our staff is experienced with it, the engineers that come before us, they are experienced with working with our staff, as well as the board, so I just think it's just a natural fit, and that's just my opinion.
No, I understand that, and that's why we're here, so everybody could give their opinion. Um, I, I have an opinion, that's what we do with subdivisions, um, that's what we do in the DOD district. It's not what we do generally. Um, the reason we're here for site plan review is, nobody's reviewing buildings under 20,000 square feet unless they're in an industrial park. Um, you know, I, I don't disagree that our staff, we have a much bigger budget for staff than the ZVA. Um, you know, I don't disagree on that, but I guess, if you ask me, do we have a handle on water? Do we have a handle on sewer? Do we have a handle on gas? I can say, there's no one that knows about that, and that's why I'm trying to have work meetings. We need to have a handle on that. We don't have a handle on that. I don't believe anybody can say, including anybody from the zoning board. What we have, you know, we have a gas moratorium. Why do we have it? Why can't we get gas? Can we really get a 400,000-square-foot building? Can we get a million-square-foot building without any gas? I don't know that. I mean, can we do it without sewer? Can we do it without water? We're looking at the Shobo property, which I agree, I would love to see state feel, but if we can get a million-square-feet of building down there, we don't have water, we don't have sewer, and we don't have gas. So I guess, are we gonna look at that being developed into house lots because we don't have that? So I guess, are we gonna look at that being developed into house lots because we don't have that? Probably. Are they ever gonna get anywhere near what they, they have been offered? I don't really care what they get for. I care that I don't get a hundred houses there instead of a million square feet of commercial space. And we're not prepared. We can't give a developer any answers. We can't say, we can get sewer there in two years. We don't know if we have capacity. That's why we're having work meetings. And everybody says, gee, we can handle it. Well, why haven't we got answers to the questions that I'm asking today? Because we've been inundated with other stuff, whether, and I hate to say it, but we're the planning police. We have been reactive instead of proactive. That's what the work meetings are supposed to be, and I hope everyone would attend and be ready in that we have a packet and that that hour is not wasted. I'm not willing to waste another hour to not have an answer when I get through, or at least enough questions so that whoever comes in front of us, whether they be here in person or not, I don't really care. My opinion is, I don't want someone to come in and tell me what he can do. I want him to put it in writing, so that I can refer to an email two years from now and say, "You told me this." And that's what I want. I want it in writing. So I guess, my opinion is, I disagree with that either board. I believe both boards do it regularly. The problem is, both boards have their own jurisdiction. And now we want to make that jurisdiction from twenty thousand feet down to maybe a thousand square feet, which really is a mom and pop operation. Do we really want to kill the mom and pop operations? Or do we want to get it up to three or five thousand square feet? That's the big thing. But I don't want to decide that. If the zoning board, I believe whoever does this bylaw should be having hearings on it, and meetings, and public outreach, and that the selectmen should come. And that it be decided whoever is the approving authority should be having these meetings. So I guess we're having the first meeting, and we invited the zoning board to make sure who is gonna be the approving authority. So I guess that's what I'm looking for tonight, is, you know, if, in, so am I correct, Ms. Bradley, in that it doesn't appear that it's against the law? It could be either. It just seems to be in general that the planning board does site plan review. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so I guess with that, maybe we don't need to go to town council. Maybe we, you know, does the zoning board believe that we should throw selectmen in the mix? You know, we have nine people here tonight on the subject. Maybe we should have fifteen. Um, you know, that doesn't make me as happy, because then we have fifteen opinions. But at least, maybe each board should take their own vote and decide who they believe should be, and, and go from there. You know, I, I just, I think it's fruitless to try to go any farther than page one, because I've got the whole thing locked up. I mean, there is a lot of questions I have, um, you know, on page two. It does say, "The zoning board of appeals shall be site plan approving authority." Um, it says that in red, "Metrics that may need to be changed." So it appeared that Serp Ed did this with the zoning board in mind. Um, you know, I mean, maybe we should have Serp Ed in here telling us why they believe, or if they believe it should be one or the other. Um, you know, I believe both boards have their, their consultants. Um, you know, I know consultants from both boards. I think they do a decent job in general. Um, I guess my opinion is, I, being chair of the planning board, I don't mind doing it at all, but I can tell you that our meetings sometimes last till nine or ten o'clock at night. The reason, from Mr. Farley's information, we started at six thirty is because we weren't getting up till after ten o'clock for nights. So it has quieted down a little. I mean, believe it or not, things have got busier, we've slowed down, which is a great thing, so we can do some planning. This is one of the, one of the planning things we're doing. We're doing the thirty hour, um, or forty hour. The problem with the forty hour is, I think our board is split. So, you know, we really don't, oh, it got voted for, and, but I believe when it comes to a public hearing, that we have a couple of members that are not for the forty hour. So I guess we have a lot of things on our plate. I would agree with Mr. Braun, in that aspect, that, you know, it would seem though that they could take the load easier than us. I'm not saying it's right, wrong, or indifferent. What I'm saying is, that the planning board, I would love to have someone come into the planning board, say to our town planner, "Can I get water on East Road Street?" You know, it's two ninety-two. And our town planner to take a map out and say, "There isn't water there, but, you know, our hope is that we'll have water there in three years." So I guess that's what I'd like to see our town planner be able to do with water, sewer, gas, and any other utilities that people need. Um, you know, it seems though that electric is easily gotten, but I gotta believe at some point we might have problems with that or an overload, and we probably should be checking with electric also. So, but, you know, to build giant buildings and put them on propane, I think we're only kidding ourselves, that we're shooting ourselves in the foot, because propane is twice the cost of natural gas. And if we can't give them natural gas, same with sewer, same with water. Uh, when it becomes over twenty-five people, it comes with public water supply. So if you get a warehouse that's got twenty-six workers in it, they either have public water, or they have to have a four-hundred-foot radius around their building that they could put a public well in that they're gonna have to monitor. Big companies aren't interested in doing that. So I guess, my opinion would be, and that's what the work meetings are for, and I urge all the members to be at all the meetings. Because it's, we need to talk about it as a group. I don't want to rehash it. I want to do it that night, get as far as I can, and if it works, it works. We need to have answers when we get through. So I don't know, um, to Ms. Bradley, um, what is your opinion of the next step that we should make? And then I'll open it up to the rest of the boards.
I don't know. I mean, I said everything I needed. I, I said everything I wanted to say. I, that's up to you guys.
No, okay, that, thank you. I mean, I'm just, I'm looking for the rest of my board members. Um, any, any questions or answers? Mr. Farley?
Um, yeah, I think, uh, if, if this is a proposed bylaw, we probably want to have the board of selectmen weigh in before we go there. Um, I would suggest that we get as a unified opinion as possible before we get to the board of selectmen, unless you want them to decide. I don't really care. Uh, but a legal opinion seems like it would be the first logical step. When we get that opinion back, then we can discuss whatever that opinion says, and then move forward. But again, if this is a bylaw, it's gotta go in front of, uh, the selectmen anyway, and it's gotta get legal review, anyway.
Right, but what Tracy had said there with regard to site plan review or site plan approval is not mentioned in Mass. General Law. So we're not gonna really get an opinion from town council except for, well, this is how it's typically done.
Right, to, to Mr. Farley?
I can get that opinion if you want an opinion from town council on how site plan review is typically handled, but it won't be everything per Mass. General Law.
I think the first- Okay, let me take it back from the, Mr. Farley, I think that we kind of self answered that question tonight. There is no legal person that's supposed to do it, or legal board. Um, so either board could do it. I think it gets to a question, what is typical? Um, but then the question becomes, Middleborough already does something that's not typical, in that they have the zoning board do, uh, the twenty thousand square foot, the multifamilies at this point. Um, so I guess the question becomes, are we going to be taking away something that is currently done by another board, which I'm not interested in doing? Nor do I want to push it down their throat. Um, so I guess my opinion would be that, yes, I would like, I think, town council get an opinion from legal opinion, the only thing they're gonna tell us is that either board could do it. Um, I guess if the selectmen would like to do that, I think that's up to them. But I do agree that I think what we probably should do is have a joint meeting if we can amongst the three boards, um, and go from there. Mr. DeGraziere, I guess, are you of that opinion, or what is your opinion at this point?
I think, uh, joint meeting would be the best way to go. The, uh, board of selectmen are gonna have to approve this to be put on, before the town for a vote, anyway. So I don't disagree with Mr. Farley.
Okay, thank you. So I, I would like to do this to separate boards, so, um, I, I'm looking for a motion from someone from my board. Um, does someone have a motion to make?
A motion for what?
A motion to invite, I guess, I think that the planning board has done this much of the site plan review, I think the planning board might as well take the lead role and ask if the selectmen and the zoning board and the planning board should have a meeting amongst the three of us, and kind of hash this out the same way we're doing it right now.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we invite the board of selectmen and the zoning board of appeals to attend a planning board meeting to further our discussion on the site plan review bylaw draft.
Okay, motion made by Ms. McGee, second by Mr. Farley. Um, I'd like to put a date on that, uh, to our town planner. Is June first okay, do you think?
No, we can add that to, June first or June fifteenth?
Okay, um, does the zoning board have any preference, is to the first or the fifteenth?
First works for me. I don't know about the rest of the members.
Okay, you want to hold your, your board?
Um, Ed, does the first work for you? Um, Dr. Braun?
Yes?
Does the first work for you for the joint meeting?
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble understanding the term.
I said, does the, uh-
Um, it-
The first of June work for-
Mr. Braun? Mr. DeGraziere is asking if you, the first would be a good date to have a joint meeting with selectmen.
Either day is fine with me.
Okay. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, Bill?
Mr. Gatto?
All right. If we have a joint meeting, I like to be the fifteenth, and I like to be in person, because I'm tired of not being able to speak, and you understand us. I want it in person. I'm tired of this. There's, there's comments that need to be done, and people can't talk to each other. I'm, I'm tired of it. That's my opinion, the fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. Gatto. Um, all right, so Mr. Mr. DeGraziere, is the fifteenth work, you think?
Um, it should. I believe we only have one meeting.
So, Ms. Ms. McGee, could you add that to your motion?
Yes, um, so we'll add a, a motion that we will meet on June fifteenth.
Thank you. Mr. Farley, amend it, do a second?
I'll amend it.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, uh, roll call vote, Mr. Gatto?
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
Aye.
Ms. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Farley?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Um, I guess Mr. DeGraziere or anyone from the zoning board want to speak about anything else?
No, I think we've covered it all at this point. Um, I look forward to the joint meeting.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if you want to adjourn your meeting at this point, or do you want to stay on?
Um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Um, Jack?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Dr. Braun?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
Board, zoning board of appeals is adjourned. Thank you.
Okay, I, I thank the zoning board for attending tonight and having five members present. Uh, appreciate the comments and hope we can get this straightened up.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, all right, to go on, we have number five, which is reviewing site sign special permits for Emerald Grove and Green Envy, which are two special permits for marijuana establishments. Uh, Ms. Bradley, uh, can you give us an update on that? I think we have Attorney Silverman on the, uh, line now, so, can you give us an update?
Um, these two, um, special permit public hearings were enclosed and approved at our last meeting on May fourth. I drafted the, um, approvals and sent them to each applicant for review, and these are the final documents that includes everything that the board had asked at the last meeting, and so you had them just take a look at.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any comment from any board member? Ms. McGee?
Um, I just wanted, on the first page for the Emerald Grove, um, it says it-
Yep.
Thirty-one State's Way, Harwich, Mass. Is it Harwich, or is it Harwick?
No, yep, that's Hopey Harwich, thanks, that's a good test, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGee. Any other members' comments? Um, I'm gonna save my comment after Attorney Silverman. Would you like to talk to this permit, or are you all set at this point?
I, I think we're all set. Um, I, I think, you know, we've, we've been over this, and we certainly understand the conditions, uh, that were imposed, and, and have no problem, uh, complying with them. So, uh, I, I think we're, we're all set, thank you.
Okay. My one comment, which has been my comment throughout this for the last year and a half, and I still don't necessarily agree with it, but I guess it is what it is. We still have lot two B, Building Free Charlotte Court, off three seventy Wayham Street, in some places. And, I mean, in other places, so on page one, it says off three seventy Wayham Street. Page two, on the net, two point one, it says lot two B, Charlotte Court, three seventy Wayham Street. So we can't seem to get a hold on, I understand what you're doing, and I understand that now the frontage is on three seventy Wayham Street. Two point six says in parentheses, three seventy Wayham Street. So in the matter of maybe eight paragraphs, we have three different descriptions of the property. Um, the driveway comes off Charlotte Court. Um, I would, you know, I mean, I guess I have a problem doing a special permit on page five. Cultivation Facility Special Permit Application for Site Plan Approvals, Building Three, Lot Two A and B, Charlotte Court, Middleborough, Mass. Nothing above three seventy Wayham Street.
That, that's only, that's citing the plan. I, for that, I have to put what the plan has on it. I, I can't-
No, no, and, and, no, and Leanne, you, you know, I'm not criticizing, by no means am I criticizing the planning department. The problem is, I guess, where, if somebody told me, hey, let's go buy some marijuana, or let's go find out where this place is, where is it? What address is it? What address is the town giving it? What address is it, is it index under the registered deeds? Do I go to Charlotte Court, lot two B, Building Free, or do I go to three seventy Wayham Street? I guess, my opinion is, that this needs a formal address and a place. And the- And the problem is, once we get into, it appears that they've combined lots 1 and 2, so now it's called lot 2A and B, is there a lot 1 anymore? Is lot 1 not lot 1? Has somebody combined the deeds? Have they not combined the deeds? You know, now they, I believe that they're gonna come in with lot 3, is that not correct, Ms. Bradley?
At some point, yes.
Right, so, I mean, what's lot 3 gonna be called? Is that gonna be called 370 Wareham Street, or is that gonna be called Charlotte Court, or is the fire department, is the building department? What is the address? I mean, I've said this-
It's E-911 that issues the addresses. I mean, maybe Ms. McGee, Attorney Silverman can speak to that, um-
Well, that's what I'm saying. I, I mean, I'd be happy for someone to tell me, put in your GPS where Emerald Grove is, and it, to come up with the same address in 16 paragraphs, but it comes up four different addresses, or four different ways of the same address in, you know, 10 paragraphs. So, to Mr. Silverman, go right ahead.
Uh, so, in my understanding, the developer of the property, you have been raising this issue consistently, that the developer of the property, I think, has reached out to the fire department, I think it is, that's who it is on numerous occasions to try to get this answered. We haven't been able to do it yet. I would say, I would suggest this to you, that for, for your purposes tonight, there is a site plan, and there are floor plans, and you can identify where on the site the building is, and you can identify where in the building this particular project is, so it can be identified. I understand your concern about the address. I don't think I can be the one that dictates what the address is, somehow the town has to do that, but I'm not sure what else to be beyond that.
Right, I'm not happy signing a special permit that I don't know what the address is.
But you do know-
I mean, Attorney Silverman.
You do know where the-
I understand that, Attorney Silverman. Ask, tell me this, if I went to the Registry of Deeds, how do I find a special permit?
Well, it'll be recorded.
I know, but what address will be recorded on that? We do, we go to the registry under address, we should be able to look under an address and see what special permits are under that address. What address do I look at at the Registry of Deeds? That's what special permits are for.
And all I can do at this point is record it, uh, as it's been dictated to me, which is lot 2B, uh, with the building number, and at 370 Wareham Street, also known as Charlotte Court. I, I don't, I don't know how this, we can be responsible for this, we, we don't create the addresses, but I, I, I get where you're coming from. I'd like it clarified too. I just, I mean, I know the developer of the property has been trying to get this resolved, but I, I don't know how he, I don't think it's his responsibility either, quite frankly, I don't know how you do this, but I think the town has to be the one that does it.
All right, I guess, let me, I, Mr. Healy, let me just go a little farther.
Good.
Applicant, Emerald Grove, Lot 2B, Charlotte Court. You don't even keep consistent with Building 3. I mean, there's another, the applicant isn't even, doesn't have Building 3 on it. I mean, you've got to agree, Mr. Silverman, even the paperwork is not very, um, friendly to a person that is trying to figure out exactly where this property is.
I am not disputing any of that, okay? I, again, uh, and I think it was Mr. Healy who brought up early on in this process, that a lot of things were backwards here with the development of the property. I, 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 we came into this, I've got a client that wants to operate a business, we've been at this a long time, trying to accommodate you at every step of the way. I understand your concern, if there's an, I don't know how to make it a condition, I, I'd offer that if, if that's something you want done, but I don't, we don't seem to have any control over what this is called. Um, is there somebody on the board that wants to take this on, to go to, is it the fire department?
Yeah.
That, I, I-
Ms. Silverman, I'm gonna take Mr. Healy. Mr. Healy?
Yeah. I, I'd be, I'd be more than happy to attempt to, uh, speak to the gentleman at the fire, the firehouse that is, is in charge, is charged with doing this. I need a, a, a full set of the final plans.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. He-
Do you have the speed numbers?
Okay, hang on, uh, um, Ms. Bradley, hang on for one minute. Um, I think you're gonna say that it is not the fire department that puts numbers, it is E-911, which is the police department, is that not correct, Ms. Bradley?
Correct, and, and, um, the woman's name is Amy Dowler.
Right, it has nothing to do with the fire department.
Okay, E-911, is, is there a police officer named?
No.
The person in charge is Amy Dowler.
And who she works for?
The police department.
Okay. Is she a clerk?
I believe she's the executive assistant, um, to the police team.
Okay. Amy Dowler.
Yep.
I believe it's D.O.H.L.E.R., is that not correct, Ms. Bradley?
Um, I think it could be-
D.A.H.L.E.R.?
Or, uh, D.O.W.L.E.R.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Um-
Joe Meandiel?
Uh, whoever, Mr. Meandiel, do I do that before?
Yes, Jack, we'll email you her contact information tomorrow morning.
That's fine.
So you'll have everything?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so, I, I guess, with that said, although I'm not happy that this hasn't been straightened out before, I'm not interested in holding up another taxpaying, uh, entity in the town of Middleborough that is not gonna hopefully cost us a lot of money for schools and/or police. Um, although it's marijuana, I don't think the police are gonna spend a lot of time there with a little watch. So, I'm interested, um, with Attorney Silverman, um, agreement, and the other marijuana establishment, I believe agrees mostly with everything we do, that when they get an address, um, they make sure that it's indexed, and from now on, that address is used for these establishments. I mean, you've been in front of us for a year and a half, you know, I think that probably this could've got straightened out if somebody really put their head to it, so, but I'm not interested in holding you up. So, I would be interested in a motion to sign off on these permits if no one else has any other questions. Does anyone else have any other questions of the board?
Are you saying-
Does anyone else have, Mr. Healy?
Yeah, are you, are you suggesting that it be subject to the change in language in the, in these two documents? Is the ad-
Well, I don't, I don't think they need to change it, it's been this way for a year and a half now, we've, I've struggled with it, they know my concern. I guess I don't wanna slow them down any more than they've been slowed down already. I, I do have just an interesting question of Attorney Silverman. Do you know what condition the building is in, and if you're ever gonna move in?
Uh, my understanding is that the building's put up, it's, there's, uh, several different tenants that are gonna be going into this building. Um, I think, uh, there's some other ones that are gonna be coming before you, uh, probably within the next 30 days or so, uh, for additional special permits, and I would expect, you know, the interior build up for all these tenants to begin probably within the next six months.
Okay, so, and the reason I ask, the building's been up for a year.
Right, but-
Correct?
Everybody that's going in there is a marijuana company, and it's been an unwieldy process, so, but we're working on it, trust me. I, I have other clients that are gonna be coming in front of you soon. We wanna be in there as much as you want us in there.
Okay, so that's what, that's what I'm getting to. I mean, I, I believe, um, I don't know that, you know, to Mr. Healy's question, um, I believe that you would be interested in getting a sign off tonight. I've been asking the same question, haven't got an answer, I don't believe we're gonna have the answer in two weeks. Uh, our question is, how long it's gonna be? Does the board wanna hold it up for that? I guess, my biggest thing is, when someone goes to the registry to find a special permit, it's done by many different things, and one is address. And I think that this probably should be indexed under lot 2B, lot 2B, Building 3, lot, uh, 370 Wareham Street, off 370 Wareham Street, and probably an address that is to be determined, because I believe that it's probably gonna get a Charlotte Court address, um, and, you know, that, that's the only thing. And I guess it's up to the board whether they wanna wait. I'm just frustrated it's taken this long.
I, I suspect, if, if, if you grant the decision, and we use lot 2B, Building 3, Charlotte Court, and 370 Wareham Street, if you wanna put a condition in that says, at such time as, uh, E-911 determines a permanent address, uh, that we will file an addendum to the special permit at the registry, I'm happy to do that.
So I'm looking for a motion from a board member, what they would like to do.
How many, how many, um, tenants?
Mr. Healy?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Healy. How many tenants are there going to be in each building?
I, I, I don't represent the landlord, okay? I don't think there's a uniform amount. Different tenants, uh, are taking different amounts of space. He's got, you know, several buildings, they're, they're slight, I think they're like 19,900 feet, square foot buildings. Some people are renting 12,000 square feet, some are renting 1,600 square feet. It's, it's all over the map, so I guess, some buildings could have two or three tenants, and some may have five or six tenants, it, it'll vary.
Right, now you got-
Thank you, Attorney-
In terms of-
Attorney Silverman. All right, Mr. Healy, I, I guess to clarify Attorney Silverman's answer, I think he's absolutely right. I think that it could be one tenant in a building. Um, you know, there appears to be three or four buildings. Um, I haven't kept up with it from the planning board aspect, the zoning board issued the permit for how many of the buildings they have. Um, you know, there could be one tenant, there could be 20 tenants, they could take a thousand square foot each. So that's the problem I have, is that I believe that this is gonna get very confusing very quickly.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my question, if I had been able to ask this, deals with how they're identifying the users now. We have a lot 2B, Building 3, Charlotte Court, and a lot 2B, Building 3, Charlotte Court, um, both different users. So, our, our mission here, whether we choose to accept it or not, is to be able to identify each individual unit in each individual building. As a-
Uh, Mr. Healy, I, I under, I understand, and that's why I bring it up. We can, I guess, hopefully, that may be one thing we can plan on doing next time one of these come up, is to get it done better, but I believe these, we have an applicant. One applicant is Green Envy, lot 2B, Unit 3, Charlotte Court, and one is Emerald Grove. Um, until such time as E-911 gets it all together, and, and I, you know, I, I don't blame E-911 at all. I believe, and I'll put this blame on one person and one person only. Attorney Silverman, it's your landlord. He did everything backwards, he did everything, as far as I'm concerned, wrong, and my opinion is, he's the problem with everything that's going on here. So, I guess, I will throw it squarely in his court. So, I don't blame anybody in the town of Middleborough for the fiasco that has happened, and I, I appreciate you hanging on for a year and a half, and I don't know that I could put up with someone that long to just make it, I believe the zoning board is probably frustrated with the whole thing too. Um, so I guess, I understand, I guess, I'm looking for a motion from a member of my board, whether we should sign these tonight as shown, or whether we'd rather wait maybe two weeks, see if we can get a answer from E-911, and change the address so that we do understand. Mr. Farley?
Mr. Chairman, a motion we approve as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Farley, have a motion. Do I hear it second? Do I hear a second for the discussion?
Second.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. McGee's second discussion, Mr. Healy?
Yeah. If, um, if Leanne would give, uh, Ms. Attorney Silverman my contact information, I think within a week's time, certainly within the two weeks between our meetings, we can finally get units assigned to a street address.
With all due respect, um, I know that Mr. Hunt has reached out to them before, and I know he hasn't gotten anywhere. And I'm gonna be back here in two weeks, and nothing's gonna have changed.
Not, not, I have anything to do with it.
So, I, I appreciate that, I hope you're right, but I've offered that, that we can make sure that this gets identified through an addendum at the Registry of Deeds, and I'll file it with you as well, once they deal with this, but I, I-
Okay, Mr. Silverman?
Yeah, sure.
I guess we, we have a motion and a second on the floor. I'd rather take questions from just, uh, our board members at this point. Um, and I, I guess, I'm up in the air. I, I'd like these people to get going. I'm not sure after a year and a half that two weeks is gonna make any difference, but I'd like to urge the board that if they vote for, to wait two weeks to sign this, that at the end of two weeks, we just sign it. But, I'm up in the air, I could go either way, uh, with signing it tonight, or signing it in two weeks, whether we have a number or not. If Mr. Healy feels strongly about it, um, you know, I mean, that will be in the vote. So I'm gonna, any other discussion amongst the board members? Hearing none, roll call vote, Mr. Gatto?
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
Aye.
Ms. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Farley?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Um-
A question, Mr.-
Good luck, Attorney Silverman.
A question-
Mr. Healy?
Yes. Uh, am I, I've been released of my obligation to try to get some, uh, unit-
No.
Street numbers? No, I'm, I'm still going-
No.
So, Mr.-
Well, I'm the hunt.
Uh, Leanne Bradley will be sending you my contact information. Uh, let's get at it.
Thank you, be back, appreciated.
So, from the chair, the only thing I'm saying, Mr. Healy, I understand the concern, except that, you know, this is a fiasco I hope won't be, won't happen again. Um, you know, maybe we can see in, in, maybe you can find out what E-911 needs in order to get those numbers. Um, to Mr. Silverman, I gotta tell you, Mr. Hunt hasn't succeeded in much he's tried to do, so I'm not really, uh, overly enthusiastic that Mr. Hunt reached out to E-911, because it seems like everybody he reached out to, you know, nobody he got the information to correctly, and that's why you've been a year and a half. So, I, I would hope that Mr. Healy would get someplace, I hope that Mr. Healy brings that back to the board, and that, you know, next time we can ask the applicant for the correct information from E-911. You know, I, I would understand if there's not a building there. It's hard to give a number without a building. And maybe the problem is, Mr. Hunt has a building and has no idea how many units are in it, so they're reluctant on giving Mr. Hunt numbers, and as you say, there may be six units in a building, or six tenants in a building. How does 911 give them numbers for lot 2B unit, or Building 3, when they don't know how many units are in it? So, I would be reluctant, certainly as the 911 coordinator- So, I would be reluctant, certainly as the 911 coordinator, to start giving out units, numbers. And I think you went from the back of the lot to the front of the lot, to the side of the lot. I guess, you know, you gotta understand, 9, E-911 is not in the card-chuffling game. And, you know, I think you can appreciate the problem that this has dealt. So, I'm not trying to blame anyone, but I think this is a problem that a landlord or, or landowner has created and has made a lot of heartache for all of us. And I think you agree to that.
You bet.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Um, so that, and I've got up on a tangent a little bit. Ms. Attorney Silverman, you're for what applicant?
Uh, Emerald Grove.
Okay. So, we just made a motion and approved it on Emerald Grove. To sign, do I hear a motion on Green Envy? Everybody all set with, do I hear any questions on that permit? Are we ready to sign it? I entertain a motion. Mr. Fowler?
Any motion to approve as presented?
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Ms. McGee, second. Any discussion on the motion to sign the Green Envy, uh, special permit? Roll call vote. Mr. Gasso?
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
Aye.
Ms. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Fowler?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So, that one passes also, but that doesn't relieve you of your duty, Mr. Healy, of getting a number for that one either.
No, no.
Thank you. It was nice of you to, uh, offer your services.
Yeah, well, you know, I, I think we can make this happen. I think we can make this happen.
No, I, I'd very much like to see that happen. All right. Item being followed. South Coast Rail. Uh, Ms. Bradley, what do we have?
Um, I can just give a quick update on the meeting that we had for the Stateholders booth that was held on Monday, May 10th at 6:30. Um, the bulk of the meeting was focused on, um, complaints from residents on the noise. The CSX trains have been moved from the, um, the regular train yard closer to the center, towards the yard that, um, is in the vicinity of the new train station. And with the cutting of trees, it has definitely caused a lot of issues with, um, residents in the Sycamore, um, condominium units. Um...
All right, Ms., Ms. Bradley?
Yep.
May, may I just, may I just ask a question?
Sure.
And South Coast Rail says they have nothing to do with it, correct?
Um, they do, but, uh, G-Pla, G-Pla is going to coordinate a meeting, uh, between D, DPA, CSX, uh, DOT, and themselves, and along with, um, with the town. I don't have a date for that yet. I asked today if there was a date scheduled. Um, but we didn't hear back. But that, that was the bulk of the meeting, was, um, CSX, uh, DOT, um, you know, Mount Postal issues, which isn't really planning, but, I mean, it is, it is a town...
No, but it, it is a town issue that's been long debated, and South Coast Rail, although they can plant a, um, station in our town where we don't necessarily want it, and we get nothing but...
Yeah.
A few things that, uh, you know, are nice to have, but certainly don't compensate us for anywhere near the hassle we're gonna go through with that station. Um, I guess my opinion would be, I want that meeting, and we need to, um, to advertise it and do it, and certainly make it so that all board members can attend. I don't want them calling us the day before and telling us, gee, we're gonna have that meeting tomorrow. I think that meeting needs to be so that all board members may attend. I have always said that it appears to be a waste of time. I would like to be at that meeting, 'cause it appears that maybe something will get done. I do believe that it's planning. Um, if we're hurting the health, safety, and welfare of our inhabitants, uh, which CXX has been doing and always has done, and doesn't really care, I believe that is planning. As much as it's not planning in the sense, it certainly affects a fair amount of our residents in a negative way, and I believe the planning board should do everything in their powers to rectify that situation. Uh, I'd like to open that up to the board. Does anybody have any, um, comments about that? All right, hearing none. Um, I'm at the end of my list, I guess. Is anybody else had anything that they'd like to say before I entertain a motion to adjourn? I don't hear anything, Mr. Gasso.
Aye.
All right, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
One more.
Motion by Mr. Fowler, may I hear a second?
Thank you.
Second by Mr. Healy. Roll call vote. Mr. Gasso?
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
Aye.
Ms. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Fowler?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Thank you for the zoning board for attending the meeting.